Okay, at this time I'll call the regular November 7th, 2023, Whitley County Council meeting to order. Would you please stand for pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Hey, first one we got is DJ.
I'm not DJ.
Well, a lot better look.
So DJ wrote a letter to the council, like, I believe you all have a copy of it, explaining what it was that he requested, but those requests if you have any questions. The specifics of the letter essentially are that the forfeiture fund was budgeted $10,000 for the year. We spent $7,300 out of that fund so far this year for SWAT cameras. Those are licensed spray breather cameras that will be placed in the county that will be catching traffic. It will help with investigation. So we have $2,700 left in that fund. There's $17,000 in the fund, but there's 2,700 left in the budget for this year. So we're asking for an additional 5,000 to be appropriated to that.
Where does that money come from?
The forfeiture fund comes from forfeitures of, generally speaking, drug money. So someone who would be caught in our county for investigation that has both drugs and money, or it could just be that they have money that came from drug profits. This is where this money came from. There was a stop that the city police made. Believe it was sometime maybe late last year, maybe early this year, from a gentleman in Texas that was moving a large amount of marijuana. He filled in the letter and there was a large amount of cash on him and that money was forfeited. Our office handles forfeitures a little differently than they handle forfeitures throughout the state. Some counties have additional attorney's offices that they hire to do forfeitures and then they get their portion back after they pay the funds to whoever that firm is that they hired. Our office has, Lindsay in our office does our forfeiture. So we don't actually pay anyone to do our forfeitures. And then we'll do give the forfeitures allotted to us. Those are split based on Indiana code. So some of that goes to the common school fund. Some of it goes to the prosecutor's forfeiture fund. And then some of it goes to the drug reimbursement fund.
So what you're asking us to do is raise the limit on what you're allowed to have in there. So if we don't raise the limit, leave it the way it is, you've got extra money. Where's that money from?
Actually, I have to use it within three years. So I'll be honest with you, I'm not real sure why we wouldn't have budgeted the full amount. I'm not, I wasn't in on the original conversation about how much we budget for the year. But the amounts that we get from forfeitures by statute must be used within three years of the forfeiture. So that money would sit there, it would assume until next year and then we would have to budget at least that much or until over the next three years, that would be to be to zero.
So you've got $2,700 left in the budget. You're asking for 20,000 more. But what is your shortfall expense?
I guess in our two.
You're asking for 5,000 more for this year.
Right, for the, and then that's to purchase the protective vests for the correlation.
And it says you have $2,700 in the account.
Right. Are you asking how much the vests are?
Yeah, I can answer, I'm gonna figure out what your shortfall is.
So the vests are budgeted at, our request is for $6,986.
So hypothetically, if the police today make a stop and there's $100,000 that's seized and you get $100,000 of that back after the process, you'd be back in here next week asking us to increase it to that $100,000. So you could have that money in, to come and pour in that budget.
Right, essentially, we would not be able to spend any amount of that money unless it was budgeted in our budget, or we would have to come back and ask you to allow us to appropriate that for expenditures.
Thank you.
Any other questions? First and second, any further discussion? If there being none, all in favor, raise your right hand. All them opposed to say.
Much better than DJ.
That's what we have more here.
Hey Judge.
Good morning, everyone. I apologize for my voice. Not sure if it's the cold or I've finally hit puberty. But I'm here to request an additional $5,000 appropriation for my, it's for a jury compensation. I wrote a memo, I'm not sure if you had a chance to review it. But normally, I call a six or seven person jury when I have my juries. Recently, we had a conflict. Judge Renshaw had been the prosecutor on a gentleman that had a level two felony dealing methamphetamine as well as, yeah, a large amount of methamphetamine. So I had to preside over that trial in my court and I had to call twice as many people. And then, as you know, this year, the House bill doubled the amount I was supposed to compensate the jurors. And then one jury trial pretty much just blew my budget. So I think I'm about, I want to say either $1,300 or $1,600 in the red right now with my jury compensation. So just asking for a $5,000 additional appropriation to cover that shortfall. And then make sure, we've got a couple of jury trials scheduled this year. Just make sure I don't have to come back in a month and say, well, I had another jury trial and we're short again. So I'm asking if council would appropriate an additional $5,000 for me to that budget.
And state, when they, when they up those rates, there's no compensation from them to us for that at all. We're just. They tell us what we have to deal with.
Absolutely. It's the story of my world.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Will that just come out of county general then?
Yes, yeah, it'll come out of county general.
Yeah, it did. And I've never, in 13 years, we've never, we've never outed that budget. And last year, I didn't use it at all, so I didn't want to ask for more money on a budget I had not used any money out of for this year. And I ran, basically, I ran the wheel of wheels and lost. So that's why I have to come back.
Did you talk to Judge Renshaw about whether he could help offset that?
I actually tried to save his trial. I tried to steal that money from him, actually, but he caught me. So, but no, I have not discussed that with him. And I didn't know, I probably should have talked to Tiffany to see if we could adjust some of his money towards mine. But I don't even know if that's possible.
Yeah.
Is there, what's in Judge Renshaw's budget yet for the jury trials for the year? And the reason I mention that is because it shouldn't have been this.
Absolutely, it's all his fault. And on his behalf, I don't know what he has scheduled for the rest of the year in terms of his trial. I did not discuss that with him. Don't know that I've ever had a situation where I've even thought about cross-court allocations.
I'm assuming he pays that from a different fund, not county general, because I don't see it in his county general.
I believe it is my 12-6-0-2. Does he have the same number?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, he calls that pedigree. He has $900 in there.
Okay, that's going to cause me to be short. I think I'm down $1,300. Just explore, but I'd still take it from him if you want to give it to him.
I make a motion for additional appropriation of 5,000.
First now.
Is that correct, Judge?
Yes, sir, I'm asking for my pedigrees.
First and second, any further discussion? If there being none, all in my favor, raise your right hand. All them opposed to say.
Thank you, folks, appreciate your help today.
Next is EMA.
Good morning, counsel. Amy Biggs, Whitley County Emergency Management. I come for you today for a request of additional appropriations. Based upon the auditor's recommendation, she suggested that I request to subsidize the personnel budget for my EMA deputy director. As you may recall, as those that were on the personnel committee, we did do a reevaluation of that job description, which did highlight that it did approve for an additional increase in that amount from what I budgeted in 2023 for our budget. So the difference specifically that she calculated that I would estimate for the end of the year would be $3,382.65. But her recommendation was to ask for an additional appropriation of $5,000 in the case that I would have overtime associated with any of those expenses on my budget. So I come before you today to request that amount to cover personal salary benefits. Open to any questions that you may have.
Do you have a specific place you wanted to bring that money from? Or still from county general, or you don't have anything?
It would have to be county general.
Yeah, because you don't have anything extra anywhere.
Correct.
And the council okayed that.
Yep, and I had told her to wait because at that point, we didn't have the position filled. So I didn't want to ask for an additional and it may not be needed depending how long it would take to hire the person. So we wait until as far as we can.
What's council like to do?
We've already approved that. I'll make a motion if we approved it 5,000. It's already been previously approved.
Okay, so you want to prove it or not?
We have to prove it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to cover.
John first, Ray first, and second. Second. Any further discussion? If there being none, all in favor, raise your right hand. All them opposed to say.
Thank you very much, counsel, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
This morning, we come before you for transfers. What we are doing is make this simple, the ones that need approval. Jody, specialist that's probably giving you a packet that explains everything in detail, which I totally confuses me, so we're going to keep it simple and concentrate on approval. If you have questions, please direct to her, she will go and answer them. As you look in, you'll see 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, and things like that. These are transfers only as far as we just take one line item money, pick another one up and need to get no additional money. So ones when it comes to either 1.1 to 1.4 payroll line item utilities, the amount of $4,000, that would be one transfer. 1.5, 1.8 are payroll line items that payroll items work used throughout the year. Those will go to jail meals, the amount of $37,000.
Is that because you were short staffed?
Because all that's left over.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're short one right now, which we have, he's coming up in two weeks, but he would want to.
Okay, sorry, I cleared that.
We're doing pretty good, yeah.
But I.
Jail side.
Yeah, okay.
On 1.9 is payroll line items and janitorial supplies, the amount of $8,000. 2.1 to 2.4 explanations of sheriff salary items to gas, the amount of $20. 2.5 to 2.6 sheriff salary items to sheriff meal points, the amount of $14,000. Now, I've decided there's a lot more transfers than what I just explained, which should explain everything else in her notes. But those are the ones that need your approval today. So the others, just read the materials, she needs to face them. But don't hear people are actually telling you.
Do you think that's going to be enough gas money for the rest of the year?
I trust you, she started it off.
Okay. And everything else, we don't have to okay.
Correct, there's a lot there, but those are the ones for you guys to approve. There are some ones in the back, and I think if you have questions, we can kind of Tiffany and Jody. We took line items and transferred them out from sheriff budget, unappropriated, and re-appropriated into jail side. So there was some confusion on that of whether it needed your approval or not. Tiffany checked and stayed with accounts, there was some changes made, I guess. And those don't need yours, but those are false. Everything is in here, the ones I explained to actually need more. Everything else, and I think the others are already completed. So no additional money, it's just.
Just are all these accounts deficient right now if you're transferring to?
They're either deficient already. Yes.
What's the uniform the budget at now?
After the. When I did this report, it was $543.75.
That's not fair.
Yes, and we still have all the new uniforms.
Got all those, we have red coats, we have ballistics this year. So we have to have a good forceful.
Still, on the meals and the janitorial supplies, is that a direct reflection of inflation or for budgeting?
We're, that's one of those items that we can't ever. 50 grand, I think, this year.
And I mean, we're in the negative now if you. But I'm going to have to move again.
Meals, and that's even working this side.
We're pretty okay.
It was close, but on the jail side, it's 50. Your transfer?
Yeah.
47.
Well, that's the one. I already did a whole bunch.
So we're on 50, I think, sure. But that's everything. We next year, if we did that, what I would like to see, and maybe it'd be good for you to see, is to take how short we were on that jail meal side for like maybe the last three years and actually show you where it's. We can also. Let's say.
I'd like to probably see that in the next budgetary cycle, what you can put together.
See if we have a shortfall for the year.
Yeah, so maybe look at increasing that because I don't feel that you're always going to be able to rely on, or the county rely on.
Especially with the poll.
Employees.
Is that sorry?
Well, we certainly don't want there to ever be a motivation after replacing.
Yep. You have any? You want to explain yours real quick? Or do you, do you want her to explain to me right now, Tiffany?
Um, you can, just to let them know that it's coming for December, so they have a heads up.
Still got an explanation that didn't make my mind because we didn't receive the billing. So the billing just came, it's been, we went over the tax stuff, the information. It's going to be a budget, it's going to be a transfer plus a payment by claim. And that's just to do with the. Meetings, but that's in the works and coming, so it'll happen to you.
Yeah, she's passing it down, that's the actual claim. And then I'm going to want additional appropriations just to move the money for next time to pay that claim for $167,818.25. And then I'll have the next bill that comes in next year sometime. Then I'll have my additional to make up my $200,000 that I'll have to move then. And then the rest will be out of the.
That's her commitment that we said we would make. So she's just going to do that.
So we did. It's a claim in time.
They haven't seen it yet, so that's.
Yeah. That, I guess it's coming next month, so this is, that she's going to make that.
Do you want this request and a motion for the entire, or do you want to?
I don't care.
On your IT services for $8,000, since they have normally off that stuff.
We have IT services that depend on what cycle we're.
Yeah, how, how much the computers need to replace each year.
So the IT services itself, no computers replacement.
Oh, yeah. Because we don't know.
I didn't know how far it was broken down.
They didn't like cycle, need to replace them.
With monitors, with. Yeah, it's just a whole lot of things.
Anything else for? I guess it's up to you whether you want to make a motion to prove it all or if you want to go down one by one and prove it that way.
You're just approving all this as a spite.
We're just loading things around.
Looking for motion. We've got a first and a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, all them in favor, raise your right hand. All them opposed to say. Let it show that. Two clocks. Well, I'm filling next, my ticket. Would you, do you mind coming up? Okay, we're going to jump a little agenda a little bit because Scott's got to get out.
I have paper for personnel.
We might have to do both. I don't think I'll take that.
No.
It's okay to do.
He is.
He is, yeah. The only personnel I've got today is. If that's.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hey Scott, good morning. So I'm here, a couple of different things today. First one is about upgrading a couple of the cars that we have. We have two 2012 Ford Fusions, one that the food inspector drives, one that the nurse drives. And the reason why I saw opportunity to come to you today is, one, since Carly left us in August and we have to replace that position, which we're going to have out here in a second. There is money left over in that payroll account, almost enough to purchase a vehicle. So Tiffany, help me with some transfers. You have a request or resolution for me today to do three different transfers. And you see the packet put together for you. These are government listed Chevy Malibus from the state list. City Board got the award this year to have those, that list. I called around, I called to Kelly, left messages twice with their fleet person, no response. I called the Haven Chevrolet, they said they can't even get me a price until they order a vehicle. So it must be a special thing that Chevy, City Chevy, City Board has this year to have that government listing. So you see what they are on there, they only sent me one. So I improvised and made a second one, they're based upon the amount that they would give us for vehicles. And with the transfers, we'll be able to pay for all that out of our budget. Of course, our budget's not county general and that would take care of the money for this year. There's money left over in those accounts in case there are other expenditures in November and December that should be taken care of. So any questions on that?
I do, Scott. Do you think you're getting all that you could get out of them vehicles as far as the trade-in?
Well, probably not. I mean, I probably could have put it out in my lawn and get twice as much money. But right now, they're ordering the second wave of state vehicles that Chevy would build. They won't start building them until December, but we will get them for six months. So if we don't get on the list now, we probably won't have the allocation. So an opportunity. Yes, with the market the way it is now, it's pretty good getting money out of them, especially if you do private sales. We can't do a private sale though, can't.
No. We use GovDeals, that's an auction site. That's how we sell police cars and we've sold some highway equipment and things on there before, things for EMA. We could sell on there, I think the problem is trying to figure out when to list them if you still need to use them.
Unless you want to take the gamble and sign and say, hey, we're going to order these without the trade-ins and then pick that money we get and more impact. But again, this year's money, it will go back into the levy in two and a half, in two months. You guys. We just thought with the market the way it is now, it's definitely best trade-in value we get. Otherwise, we probably keep them until they run dead. It's already 12 years old, come next month.
What do you think the, conceivably, I mean, you've looked at it, what they're offering, very minimal, you think they're worth less than them?
I think, I think you could probably sell them right double.
What are you doubling?
Well, 4,500 for the one, 5,000 for the other. Probably with today's market, there's very little scuffs on it that they're taking care of. Oil change every 3,000 miles. It's a hard sell, but again, I don't know what the market's going to look like next year. We will not be able to do it next year in the budget. So if we don't do it now, we'll keep the cars for at least another two years.
If we table it this month and then decide next month, is that still going to be time?
They're, they will, they have to come this week or next week to get us on the list. And then we lose out on that second bill.
Being on their list to order a vehicle is not contingent upon whether we're going to trade something in or not.
Right, I could.
We can approve.
We could do that.
We can approve that you do it and then you can tell them at the time of the purchase whether we have a trade.
Okay, right.
That's what I would suggest. And then we can explore options on the auction website. Just search the exact make and model of the car and see what they're going for roughly.
The one thing is, to have the cars for us to work use, we would have to wait until these cars were going to be arriving and then put on the auction site. So you're okay with waiting that four to six months or more?
But it is still only a amount estimated and I get probably, you're paying for almost one car.
I say the question I would have, Scott, is how many miles do you think you'd add to it in that period of time?
Uh, maybe five to six in the car at most. It wouldn't be that much. Yeah, they both have different schedules. They wouldn't be able to share how they're, those out and she sees people every day all around the county. So there's a way that Tracy can come out with you. And when Carly was here, we could possibly, my vehicle and Lutz Major's truck, she would, they just brought that to drive around, so.
And with Carly leaving, you have the money.
Right, and so in the next discussion, when we talk about that, we've talked about what would be the start date that the council approved the new positions. There wouldn't be interference. We'd wait until after the year.
And that new position is not going to affect any of this?
That's what we're saying, so we wouldn't start the new position until January 7th.
Okay.
Which would be under the 2024 budget. We are talking payroll about that, when they could start, so that would be completely on next year's budget. If we spent the money out of this spot, then we wouldn't.
Be okay.
Right, the thing is, we won't have this money in four to six months.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
So there probably would be an additional request from council. If we paid for one car with the funds from your trade-ins and sales, we'd still have another car we'd have to pay for with an additional request from the council. We wouldn't have it a bunch of extra.
Okay.
Unless you want to.
No.
Keep the money. Encumber it, do the transfer encumber, hold it until next year. Encumber it, do the transfer, encumber, hold it until next year.
Do you have to pay before?
No.
So then this probably would get paid till 24 anyway?
Order them down, pay for them in '24. Encumber the money?
Yeah, that, or we have him come back and ask for an additional out of his levy, because if we don't spend these funds, they just go back in.
Correct.
Which is the best way to do it.
I mean, I guess, considering we don't know how much we might sell the vehicles for, I would wait and then do an additional, I promise you guys are all okay with that. Once we know how much we're getting out of the other vehicles.
Again, like I said, it doesn't go anywhere, it stays on the levy. I'd get on the list, and then we can see if we can't get some more money out of using the auction website.
If you get on the list now, and we're holding on the trade-in, we still fill those trade-ins in.
Yeah, but they could change their mind on what they want to get from us. I know somebody at Kelly, I might be able to reach out. I've tried twice, and. I'll make. Okay, great day. Okay, so no action, except you're authorized to request that.
Make a motion that we authorize you to hold her to the vehicle. Second.
First and second. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, raise your right hand. All them opposed, the same.
Okay, the next agenda item is to replace the position for Carly, which was health educator. The commissioner's asked me to hold off on Carly's position when she resigned. And we came back to the commissioners of this idea here of a community health nurse. Couple reasons why, now that Heather is over 20 years here, and April's over 15 years here, they have lots of PTO. And when they're gone, nobody can do their jobs. They're both full-time, bold thing, so when April goes away for a week, there's no shots. If it goes away a week, you know, tries to set up her people for two weeks, but no, they come in for dog bites or anything like that, waits until she gets back. So one aspect this nurse would cover, to some extent, their positions while they're gone, those emergencies, what happened, needs that would come up. Secondly, as we look at the Health First Indiana movement by the commissioner, excuse me, the governor did this last couple of years, and the idea is what we talked about, them letting us do these extra programs. We took some of those things and put that into this position. If you look at the duties there on the description, you can see listed by category, some of those things that the state's saying, as a health department, we should be doing some of those things in our community, working with partners to solve these issues, doing these things. So you'll get tobacco cessation, chronic disease prevention, trauma injury, natural health, things like that. So that's the position that we came up with, that was a little better, commissioner saw it was more palpable than putting health educator into the schools to do education, and probably should be doing some of that themselves, I would say. So this is the position we came up with, it is budgeted, we believe it will be the same act to that health educator position was. So next year's budget will change, I've recovered for that. Obviously, if you had approved today, we'd have refactored, but it's going to be the same nurse position as the other two nurses, which is what we have actually never joined. Any questions? Do you think it's a better move than health educator? We're still doing a lot of education through the whole thing.
For the committee, you have any? We were in favor of it, yes. If I remember that right, Joe. Yeah, we talked about it a little bit, and after he explained, it's not going to cost us any more money. It's going to cover his department better, and I think it'd be good for the county for what he's trying to do. And Scott's always did a good job, won his money and moved it, personnel, so. I think, we think it's a good move for the county.
And again, this person would start until January 7th. So once it gets re-factored, we'll start advocating for that, hold interviews, and then select somebody and have them start back that date.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion. And Joe, second. Any further discussion for Scott on this? If not, all in my favor, raise your right hand. All them opposed, same.
Council members, anything else for me?
That was it for him, right? Okay, yeah.
So, yeah, I forgot about that. So there are just minor things. Trying to align again with those same wordage, verbiage that's saying about Health First. We changed Heather's position to more aligned with that. Very small things, she's not going to do anything extra, just changing some things that she already has in there, different language that's in there, so like she already does, blood assessments, just changing that verbiage, she already does. Chemical disease reporting, which is changed in that verbiage that hers doesn't really change. The only thing it changed was on Tracy's, who's the food inspector. We put in there at the request of the commissioners or of the State Department of Health, should be involved in vector control. So prior to Tracy coming to this job, she received her category eight licenses, category licenses for pesticide spraying. So she would be one of the few people in Willy Cappy that could authorize and make sure that's done in a proper way, that it's contaminated the environment or caused problems. So we always emphasize for her to keep that license, that she's one of the few people do that. And so vector control is one of the programs that we do not do in Indiana that we, under the law says we're supposed to. We never have done that, we never had a program, because frankly, it's too expensive to do that thing. Our municipal areas, except for larval, do already do larva sighting, so they put larva side in the catch bases, something like that, reduce mosquito populations. But in the case of a outbreak, you know, we have West Nile virus, that was something that we had to do, take care of. And there's other things happening in the United States now with vector issues like dung gate fever and malaria in our southern states, which we've never seen before. And for some reason, that would happen to come up here. Commissioners or the state would call upon the county to do some type of either investigation reporting or vector control. She would be the one that would be in charge of that. They ordered it in there, it's only at that request. So this is not going to be something that's added to her job disruption now that necessarily she's doing every day, or even, it's just only a power request. And so she asked, well, what happens if we do get something like that here? And I have to start doing that all the time, but I come back to, we change that description, and then prepare to be possibly compensated for those extra hours, so. Any questions on that? Very minor.
So to amend this, there's no classification area and no salary, so it's just verbiage.
Right.
That is, Scott. That's it? Thank you.
Thanks.
Good day.
Do you need a motion on that?
No, he's going to, you're going to come back, right? If that changes?
As long as you're accepting the changes now, we'll have Wes look at it, and I don't think it's going to get changed.
Okay, then we'll have to prove it.
So I'm making a motion to amend the environmental food and public nurse job description to match what the state requires of these positions.
First is the second?
Second.
There's a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All them opposed, the same. Thanks, Scott. Ryan, you're up.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here to request a transfer from our little vehicle highway account. In the amount, $120,689.21. Purchase tractors and two ditch mowers to replace one that is an awful, had an engine failure late in the summer. The other one is a mower that was purchased earlier this year that. You'll have the pictures, or a picture that I sent that shows that the current mower is not a, not a safe tractor mower combination to use on highways to, to ditches.
I guess my question, and probably this, you're going to get stuck with it, probably. That other mower, it's unsafe, didn't they know it when we got it?
Well, part of the problem was, as far as I can see, the previous director made that purchase. I found this out after speaking with Foreman, the operator that normally operates the tractor mower, and our head mechanic. None of those three guys had any input with the purchase of that tractor mower combination. And I firmly believe if they had been afforded that opportunity, if they'd made different recommendations, so we would not have ended up with that tractor. It's an unfortunate situation, and I, I can only go with what I know, speaking with the guys, and they're still there. His wife has purchased, that person's no longer here, that kind of went on, went on their own and made the purchase. So I, last week, met with the John Deere salesman, I deal with personal business at the dealer in Huntington, and the first thing out of his mouth, and he also told me this quite previously, was that he had advised the previous director, this mower and tractor combination is not going to work for what you want it to do. And the director just getting him out and did it anyway. So like Ryan said, it's an unfortunate situation, but it's what it is, I guess.
So the last time we met, talked, you were going to go back to Kubota, and I haven't. I read all that, but I remember, is Kubota going to match John Deere? Are we saying money-wise now, or I forget?
They ended up, I mean, obviously, I'm not going to go say, hey, can you do this for us?
Yeah.
They, they did, they matched the same trade-in value for that John Deere tractor. They're within, I would say, just under $2,500. And in my opinion, and the opinion of my operator, head mechanic, Foreman, it's our opinion that Kubota tractors with the ditch mowers from Diamond would be the best option for us for Willy County. And there's several factors, the dealership's right across town, they are a diamond dealer. So they can do our warranty work, we wouldn't have to, if we bought them anywhere else, the truck, the mowers, you'd have to come from Florida, with them in Florida, Ohio, just about a 90-minute drive one way. So any warranty work, we would be responsible for the freight, ship the tractor over there. Even if you had one warranty issue, that difference of $2,500 is probably going to pay for itself, if I just have a dealership right across town. We can drive the tractor over there to, in, out, and quickly, in time. So Moore's is also told us that they will, they will carry normal wear parts, blades, bushings, any parts that normally wear on those mowers. Obviously, they have a lot of dealership that are right there and have a couple of parts. For the tractors as well, they, they've got a warehouse in Ohio, so one day shipping with that to get parts here if we need to.
I bet, I think two conversations with Ryan, one of them was the difference in price, the other was John Deere over Kubota. John Deere is out until at least May or June before you could get the tractors, I think he said.
So they've adjusted that, I believe, the tractors will be here, either just after the first of the year, or February, January, February. So Kubota's are underground now, as soon as we're able to finalize things, purchase agreement, they will ship those and across to us to see if all's set. Get the motors installed, once the mowers are done, and they're saying maximum in 12, two weeks. But for this, right about the right time, starting on inches in the spring, we'll be able to do a lot better job keeping up with two tractors.
Yep.
It was unfortunate that one died the day after, or the day before, we received the one that we're trying to replace now with this 74.
Is there a warranty difference between the two?
Kubota has better warranty, Diamond has some available, three or four-year warranty, which we probably can get, just to take that into, because included in the prices, the pricing, I think, it's going to be.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Brian on those tractors?
And it has not been advertised for the additional. If you approve, I will advertise, and I bring you one to have you guys signing your December meeting. The two that you have before your transfer requests for other items, that there's no additional that's been advertised yet.
You, you have to advertise for additional.
Correct, because he doesn't have it in his funds budgeted. So if you guys approve, we can advertise for the, what was your?
120,689,52.
What the council would like to do.
Well, I don't think we can deny that the new tractor that was purchased last year needs to be replaced. I feel it is hampering safety issues, the way it has to be used. And the fact that Kubota came back and up their trade-in value was great. I mean, that really changed the money, John Deere versus Kubota. And the local, that'd be easier, I agree with Ryan on the money savings, if they had to haul it over to John Deere, it would cost, and it would take longer.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, but I'm going to preface my motion with the fact that there could be a, a parents of what I'm looking for. Complex of interest, because I do know the local dealer, and I do deal with the local dealer myself. So I want to make sure that that has been said, and that my motion does not hinge on that as much as it does that this deal just makes good common sense. So I'll make a motion that we approve the request with the conditions that Ryan got a lot of value to play now as far as the costs and the get load, mowers put on them, and so forth. And that's my motion.
Okay, first, is there a second?
I'll second that, and I appreciate all the work. Excuse me, you've done on this, and everything, every time we call or I call, you can answer our questions. So thoroughly did a good job, and I appreciate it, thank you, thank you.
Okay, first and second, any further discussion?
How was that breakdown, and I'll probably have to advertise.
So I will do the advertisement for the 120,689,52. That will be, so he can inform us of purchase, and I will bring the paperwork for you guys to sign in December.
Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, raise your right hand. All them opposed, the same, until it passes. Thanks, Ryan.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, he has. Transfer.
So the two, one is for additional group insurance, that was not in the red when the last one was. This is for motor vehicle highway, and then he's got a couple of his supply line items that are going in the red. They're not additional, they're just transferring. supply line items that are going in the red. They're not additional, they're just transferring from, out of serious [inaudible 00:02:51].
Okay, we have the transfer that's coming out of COVID, the group insurance. And then we have one coming out of six-time payout to supplies. Does a motion, I need a one of them.
Approve the transfer resolution for both, from M V H Pelverts to group insurance, supply payout to supply as an operating supplier.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Will be in none. All in favor, raise your right hand. All of them opposed, just say.
Thank you.
Dollars, this is [inaudible 00:02:59].
That was your [inaudible 00:03:00].
Okay. Thanks for signing.
He is going back, I think it's going, we... Okay, you're fine. Carry on.
Next, we have Scott Smith.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, I was here last month talking about a radio for our [inaudible 00:03:43] bar, and I'm sorry I couldn't get the information out to you guys any sooner than what I did. Actually, General Schmidt and I met with one of the vendors yesterday. I'm working on something that is gonna work with the counsel that you bought, and is easily upgraded, so we don't have any expenses after that. I don't, you know, basically, as I told many of you, and all I'm trying to do, this is cheap and responsible as can be. They came back, Motorola came back with a bid, which Motorola radio works with my HTs when we go encrypted, where the other brands do not work with the encryption that we use currently on our radios. And that's usually when we're talking deputy coroner, deputy coroner, chief deputy coroner. And it's information that general public doesn't need to hear. Is it easier to use a cell phone? No, because, first of all, you gotta dial up the person, and it may be something you need right away. Say, Randy's responding to the scene, and I need something different, or I need to pass on some information. Well, then I gotta take my focus away from seeing, and basically dial him up if he answers, because he's driving, where radios work 100% better than a cell phone. That was one of the questions. I did a check with Josh Church, he does have, well, he said he'd have to order in used equipment. It's basically about $1,000 less than what Motorola's to get what, and actually, he hasn't came back with a hard copy price that I have asked, and I asked him several times, and I know he's busy. So, basically, the bid comes in at $6,089.14. Like I said, this has all the technology. I apologize, I couldn't get this out to you. I don't have a full-time staff, Randy, and I just spend a bunch of hours cleaning up or finishing up cases that we have, or three that are still outstanding. You know, we've been averaging about 12 outstanding cases. The forensic center's just unbelievably busy. Like everyone else, they've lost their, many areas have lost their forensic pathologists, and now they're even Tarahoe's bringing their forensic cases up to Fort Wayne. So, forensic center went from serving 16 counties up to serving 32 counties. So, you know, basically, we're spending more hours. Randy right now is averaging about 20 hours a week in the office for $10,000. But getting back to the radio, you got, I think this is the fairest way to handle this. I'm not gonna worry about HTs right now, is what we have working. I might do something different next year, let's see.
So, you still want HTs plus this car radio?
I just want the car radio.
But I mean, next year, you're gonna want new HTs?
Well, I, that's, there's another option that has came, in fact, I'm at the vendor yesterday, and is Chanel still here? Chanel can explain it a lot easier, because over my years, I used to be up on radio technology, but radio technology's moving so fast, and, you know, these guys on the same level when we talk, I think, yesterday when we were talking. Nipsey kid, or the gal from the state, had brought a proposal to me that we wanna demo before we say yes, but basically, it'll replace my cell phone, and it'll be a two-way radio that works on the state system. And right now, I think the price of that was 37, or $27 a month and 99 cents for the equipment. But I don't have that proposal in front of me right now. I kinda wanna get this taken care of as soon as I can, get that out. My car, when they, county bought it, it is wired for the radio, it has the antenna. So, basically, all it's gonna involve is view connections and put in, I know, emergency radio had put a price in this quote for install, but after I talked to them again, they said, oh, it'll be far less. I think it's $396 for the install. So, if I take it to them, they said $500. And I got that, I think I can find that in my budget. As far as my budget goes, it's Tiffany will find out as Randy Smith in the next bill, our autopsy [inaudible 00:03:58], which actually understate statute, it has [inaudible 00:04:03] for discussion, same, same little DNA testing. So, has Randy suspended the next bill yet?
I show for autopsies, we still have $4,000 on there.
We got three cases outstanding, or we got three cases outstanding. So, that bill [inaudible 00:04:59].
Jason, you said you don't have any spare radios or anything for a car down there?
Car radios, we haven't replaced car radios ourselves since the E and A ones we got, the Johnson's probably in 20 years now. We have not even purchased car radios. When we, I have replaced them, a couple of them that we've had to, and I have used, I have purchased refurbished Motorola equipment from Josh. So, it's, it's a substantial savings on that end, and it works just fine. To refer, for what we're doing, and not much we talk, they haven't been an issue, correct? I haven't seen a problem with them. I'm assuming, still, I'm assuming that's what you're talking about, the Motorola car is.
Yeah. Well, Josh never came back with a price or quote I asked him.
I mean, same, same concept, you're looking, it's the same thing we've done. We've had good luck with them. I probably have three that we've had replaced from the old E F Johnson's, probably 20 years old that we got, I think, when Kathy Rockstar Ball was here on that first initial grant. I mean, we're still running 90% of those. But the three Motorola's that we purchased that reverb's are working fine.
Any further discussion? Scott?
In fact, they're gonna, they're coming in to ask for the same, I think they've already asked them the same thing. Even the problem, you know, it's one of those things where the expense over so high that everyone's happy to ask. Well, I actually, I actually got their price when commissioners bought the car, and there is, they went up by $800 since last year.
There's a possibility, though, that we could actually get out way cheaper if the cell phone thing that you were talking about.
Um, actually, we're gonna still need to have a car radio, and it's not gonna be cheaper. I mean, as far as we'll be replacing my cell phone. Believe me, I'm, as Tom knows, I'm a tight wad, I run a very tight ship, I always have. I'm stressed over this year's budget, you know, even though the state's telling me I don't have to be stressed, you know, but there ain't anything I can do. Just, this agency is growing faster, and there's more demands left and right. We don't even have a holding facility here, state mandates, and yeah. Right now, I'm driving 38 miles to Huntington to hold, so fortunately, we haven't, um, the forensic center only lights you 12 hours after autopsy, maintain a body. I have to get it out there. I'm only one in Huntington right now. It's been there over a week. That's eight times this year I've had bodies that I've held, one I'm held over 30 days. So... So, my office is gonna start costing more. Interhomes can't, can't hold bodies unless they have a holding facility. There are zero holding facilities in this county. Commissioners are well aware of it, I've had the discussions with them on opportunities and stuff, but, you know, this is a very minor thing of what I have to deal with in my office that I graciously took under my wing and, you know, dealt the best I could.
Can you refresh the conversation on why you see that's important right now to have a car radio rather than just continuing like we have two [inaudible 00:05:57].
Well, number one, we used to have what they called converticons that we put in to depth, depth car, when we were personal cars. Well, they no longer, they no longer function. So, they, and they can't get repair parts, or I might check, or some of the emails and stuff. When you're driving, the reason why, and I use the example of Sunday to Tom, two Sundays ago, when I was driving down South Willy, and Jim Johnson was trying to call me on the radio, I had to stop and change my battery because the battery died. And I just literally turned that HT on and took out the charger, you know. You know, I really feel for the deputy corners, it's easier for them to have access while they're in the car. So, one, they can hear, we can talk to multiple people instead of, you know, one person on the phone, which nine times out of 10, we're on the phone anyhow. We can talk to another deputy or, and then, you know, when one person calls us or wanting to know stuff, it's easier than them having to try to call us when our car's being called, because we try to send two deputies to our scenes. We've been out, or Randy and I showed up, they won scenes, one's doing paperwork, one's doing scenes. For the last year and a half, it's been one of us out there, because we didn't have deputy corners. They're hard to [inaudible 00:05:59]. You, what will be? Get this off of that center, I'll make a motion that we approve the deputy's vehicle price of $6,089.14.
Do we have a first, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I mean, I don't want to spend any more money than what we have to, but with his job now, with as many friends as he has, he needs something in that vehicle to keep in contact, you know, what's going on before he gets that scene.
Before we take it, I'm gonna ask a question. If you need the $6,089.14, are you gonna come back next, if there are any different type of radios?
Um, the way my budget's set, right, for next year, I should be able to handle it in my phone. I'm, I can use the phone budget.
Let me rephrase it. How long will this radio be used?
Hopefully, till my terms are up. And I'll let the next person worry about it.
Is it a long term first?
I'm gonna say, the radio, you know, we purchased the HTs in 2004. It wasn't till last year that we started having problems. In fact, I had four, I'm down to three. You know, we're gonna use those until, and I'm not gonna come before you guys and say, hey, I wanna repair this whole piece of equipment. It's obsolete. Right now, they're telling me that my radios will be good until the state goes to encryption, which, who knows when that's gonna be.
We had that discussion on the HTs the other day. I mean, I called J and K, because they said they could get you those new batteries, so I had to make a call to see if they...
Um, I did put a call in, and when I talked to one of their salespeople, that's who told me, said that we can purchase on the radio, because I honestly was gonna come before you [inaudible 00:06:03]. You know, it's almost like, yes, I wanna sell, but you got, you know, well, we can offer this, but if you switch everything over, I don't wanna switch HTs, I absolutely have to have.
And we got a first and a second on the floor. At this time, we'll take a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All of them opposed, the same, show that [inaudible 00:06:58].
So, I need to go back to the [inaudible 00:07:05].
Well, they approved it, I can bring it back to them to sign. I just didn't have anything to put an additional in. You're gonna need additional for autopsies too, correct?
Um, yeah, because I know that Dr. Wyler hasn't sent his bill, or his agency hasn't sent the bill to us. I asked Randy yesterday. Like I said, if you add up the total, we're gonna be over.
Okay, if you could just get that to me so I can advertise with the radios, and then they can have it in one swoop?
No, because not what happens, the rest of this, so we'll try to give it to you. Or Randy will be in communication.
Okay.
They discuss, where's that money coming from? Where's from, uh, Cali, June? Anything else? Thank you. Next is ARPA Resolution Dispatch Council.
This is what you approved at your last meeting? This is just the resolution to
What is that, resolution number?
2020- Twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
So we don't need anything else approved on this side? Okay, the next thing on the agenda is solid waste joint board appointment. I guess we have to point somebody to set on solid waste joint. Board. Anybody wanna do that?
I know the commissioners, we appointed John Myers at their spot yesterday. So that's not the joint board. It's the citizen action committee board. Essentially every year. The board gets it twice a year to sort of over processes and fees and proceeds in and out. And they give a recommendation to the board on any changes that would be made. Not glamorous for the community getting a stipend, generally twice a year, but I'll imagine it's gonna be pretty intense of looking at all the credentials and. Processes and so. Won't be anyone who wants to sit on that board.
Who is our representative for that?
So I guess there, there's supposed to be one. I'm not sure. A couple decades ago, but it sounds like they never put one in place. And our attorney just informed us probably about two months ago that there was such a thing. So now we're trying to get that to the place.
So we're standing up in the board.
And we have to. It's not optional. We're supposed to be in place.
Okay, I'm, I nominate.
Go ahead. You're gonna nominate Nick?
Yep. Put him on the, the joint board, solid waste.
It doesn't have to be council.
No, you can appoint someone outside of your body.
Okay, so you want somebody else besides Nick?
I'm just, I just, John and I were having like a sidebar conversation about. The understanding whether it had to be somebody that counts or not. The commissioners have appointed somebody who's not a commissioner.
They can bring this in to someone that we show.
And I think, you know, Nick would be a probably a good choice just because his financial background, but it would be. You know, if we wanted to point somebody from out of the public, I think we would need to identify somebody that had a background in. Being able to decipher exactly what his job is being asked to do by the, by the joint. Solid waste.
Doesn't seem like he's good at it all. I still nominate Nick's.
Okay.
I second it. I think he'd be good at it, and if he didn't like it, you could just know.
That's fine.
All in favor, Nick having it, raise your right hand. Congratulations, Nick.
Tiffany, can you please make sure that that gets put on our waitlist that we will over your list that position?
Next, next on the agenda is part-time pay discussion.
I'll have Jen come up and kind of help us go through this. The personnel committee's worked on this for two or three months now and. We're trying to get something set for the whole county. So the last meeting we had was November the first and we went through it again. And you should have in front of you what I had Jennifer print off for us. The personnel committee kind of decided what, what her thoughts were on it. And I guess we never did come to agreement on it, but we, we bring it from the whole council to see what their feelings are. So I'll let. Jen explain exactly what. She wants to do because it'd be easier for her to.
The proposal is just simply to move from what it is currently, which is the range is minimum wage to twenty-two forty-eight. Or if you wanted to move that. Twenty-two forty-eight to add four percent or whatever. But the new proposal is to keep the range from minimum wage, but the maximum would be dependent on where that position is classified. So I included in the copies from two thousand nineteen. Where with classified all positions, including part-time positions. So the, the maximum part-time rate that's proposing would be whatever the base hourly rate would be. According to that classification.
When did we start classifying part-time help?
I don't know if you did it before two thousand nineteen or not. But in two thousand nineteen, WIS did classify part-time.
Did we do that? Do we have classified back when we want that one?
But it's probably. That's probably the same time.
I think the part of the challenge we have now is we have so many part-time positions. And some of them, like I mentioned before, are positions like administrative assistants, and then you also have. More skilled positions like your dispatchers or your nurses. So I don't think what we've done in the past is working anymore.
And we, what Jen is proposing here is like she said, from minimum wage to uh the base max. And then that gives the department head or manager, whatever you wanna call them. That gives them the opportunity to start a minimum wage or whoever they think, depending on if they have any experience in that part-time job. Or if they're a, if they were a full-time person and went home to, to raise a family and came back to do part-time, then it's under their discretion. Where to start that personnel, not, not our, we just. I, I'm not sure. Like I said, we've talked about this for two or three meetings, two or three months. I know. I, I know I'm old fashioned, uh, but you look at, you know, part-time twenty-two forty-eight an hour. That's, that's where wages are at now. I guess the way I look at it, I mean, that's. If you want, if you want a part-time person, you know, they're gonna. They, they need that, that money. You know, I'm not saying they're gonna start the top. It's whatever the department head or manager wants to do, but. Jen's put a lot of time and effort into this. I don't know of any other better system. Than what we've got here to go off. So that's, that's, that's my voice line.
Well, there's quite a bit of range here, minimum wage to what's being presented. Now, the personnel committee felt it would give more leeway to the department heads. To base that higher wage on certifications for experience versus someone that came in with none. Because if they came in and they're ready to do the job, they should get a little bit more than a beginner that with no knowledge that had to be trained. That was the difference.
But isn't that by the head office?
It is.
We monitor the department heads on their decision of where to place them within the part-time.
It's always just been on the department head. And then council gets and lumps some in your book for pay. You could ask for that to be done set different if you choose, but right now they just say, I need twenty-five thousand dollars for part-time pay, but you don't know. If that's one, two, three, and how many they're paying at what rate. So I guess do you guys see the overall number, but it's up to that department head to set the way.
His responsibility to fall within the budget allocated for part-time.
Correct, yeah. And we did discuss that in personnel, and it is the responsibility of that department head. To give the ways accordingly to what, how they come in. I mean, it's up to them, but they should be able to do a report. To justify that.
I think we were pretty much all in agreement on this. Of all the options we looked at and had, this was the best one that we thought we could do. I mean. Your question, John, was, you know, who, who's gonna monitor what they're gonna get paid? That's why we put our trust in department heads and managers to do the best job they can for the county with the county money.
Personally, I think that. We can use our part-time job pool as a feeder for full-time employees eventually, if that comes. To fruition, paying these people decent wages are a way, a good way to keep them in the county as well.
So we need to have a motion to approve the part-time pay scale. Correct?
Yes. That motion?
I'll second.
Got first and second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. All that opposed the same.
Thank you, Jeff.
Next, I think we've got to approve our council, two thousand twenty-four council meeting schedule.
Now, a motion to approve? I would ask that, is this the time that we talk about a meeting time? I mean, is this appropriate? I would, I would advocate that we move towards like a. Late afternoon. Meeting time, early evening, just to give more exposure to those who can't make it to eight o'clock.
No, well, you know, yesterday council did decide for twenty-four, they're moving theirs from one to four, yeah. All of their meetings for twenty-four.
Counselor?
Or commissioners, sorry.
Okay.
Commissioners. Well, Nikki brought that up in her last meeting and given it quite a bit of thought. Could you move it to even say four o'clock like the commissioners or one o'clock to three o'clock? Right now, we can have second shifters and first shifters, but if you move it to mid-afternoon. You've lost the first shift, second shift, and the third shift. So your opportunity to let the plumber come in is, I think, a hamper. I mean, first shift's not out yet. Second shift has to go to work and third shift would have to sleep. Most people work till five. Second shift goes on at two thirty, three o'clock.
The first shift starts at eight, eight-ish, two. So I mean, I guess don't completely agree with you there.
Well, I was thinking. And the availability of our department heads.
And somebody had brought up. Uh, potential for overtime if we moved it to a late afternoon, early evening. For department heads, is that, I mean, is that? Sure, that's a possibility, but most of our department heads are elected officials and they adjust their schedule. Please. It's not a very good idea.
I personally don't think it's gonna make a whole lot of difference what you do. I talked to the mayor. They moved theirs to night meetings and they don't have any more there than they do during the day. I talked to several other counties and. I know I've been over to a hundred towns. Nurse's nine o'clock in the morning. They try evening meetings and it didn't pan out, so they went back morning. So.
If we set a new time, is that set for the year or can we change it?
We can change it. I would just need to advertise it and post. Which is something that commissioners also said, you know, if they try it four o'clock and it's not working now, something that they could choose to change. It's not set in stone.
I'd say we try it, just see how it works out.
I guess I, I would be in favor of maybe going to afternoon meetings, not evening meetings. We've had two or three big discussions this year. One was on the jail, one was on solar farms and. The room was filled up both days on those meetings. So if they really wanna be here, they're gonna be here eight o'clock in the morning is the way I look at it, but. That's just me again thinking. I, I don't see where an evening meeting at seven at night is gonna make any difference. I think you'd have less in this room than what you do right now. So if you moved, I would be in favor of maybe afternoon meetings, not evening. To try it, I guess.
My aspect of what I've always advocated for, I don't know that from a eight o'clock meeting to a four o'clock meeting would make any difference. I think for the transparency of it and for the general population, I would say probably the majority. Of work of a shift schedule to have a six or a seven o'clock meeting would provide that availability for more people in the community. To participate if they chose to. I'm not. Gonna say that we wouldn't get any more participation. I'm just simply stating that I don't think moving an eight o'clock meeting to a four o'clock meeting would be any different. And for what I'm looking for a change for would make a difference for people to be able to have the.
This discussion's come up multiple times in the past and we. Tried to set a meeting up for different schools, which. Felt through failed. So I'm in favor of staying with the eight o'clock.
That motion?
It's a motion.
There's a second? We got first and second. Any further discussion on? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All that opposed the same. Okay, pass forward to you. Personnel committee got a report?
Everything we had was with the health department, so we're good there.
Commission?
EMS funds, that check.
Um, yeah, we can talk about that first. So funds were released from the community foundation for EMS services from that trust fund that's managed by. By the community foundation and. Were in the red twenty-five thousand because the payment wasn't made previously, but like I said, we proceeded it, so we would like to just put it back.
Isn't that what you normally do with that money from it? It goes towards contract to EMS or?
Yeah, so we had, we had to come up with the twenty-five thousand out of our budget to cover what wasn't reimbursed.
Right.
Right now, we've been reimbursed. We'd like to put it back in, so we're not in the red, the red on that.
Yes, council just needs to allow for that. Instead of just going into pot, you need to reimburse their negative twenty-five thousand if that's.
I make a motion that. The money from the community foundation goes back to EMS contract.
You got first and second. Further discussion on it? If not, all.
No, because there's a joint board between Parkview, the county, and then one member from the community foundations, a five-member board. And they vote on how to utilize those funds. I think there's a, there's a minimum threshold in the trust. And anything that's over that minimum threshold by like, by, by growing through interests. The board can vote. They've, in the past, they bought new cots for ambulances. We've covered our, our payments before. They're just a wide array of things that the money can be used for, but it has to be. Voted on and approved by that five-member committee.
I know we talked about it before.
Yeah, so we can't, it used to be that it would cover a large share of our contract service for EMS, but it doesn't anymore. And so we can't count on that any longer, so we're budgeting for the full amount. And as you guys recall. The agreement that we're in with Parkview now, we went from two hundred fifty thousand to two seventy-five to three hundred. And we have to start looking at our contract renewal, and I don't know what the, what the pricing is going to do. We, we have no idea, but. You know, the funds can be used for a wide array of things.
Okay, we have a first and second motion on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All that opposed the same.
And along those lines. There is, so the legislature passed a, an income tax, a lit tax. For EMS services for counties to pay for their contract services last year. I'm not at all advocating for it, but we are looking into it. And I know Tiffany has spent, I forwarded you an email and you spent a lot of time contacting other auditors and putting everything together. And we intend to meet and I, I know the only county that I'm aware of that recently did it was Huntington County, and I have not talked to like Tom Wall or anybody down there yet to see.
There's a few more. There's a few more.
How that worked out for them, but. Yeah, because currently we pay for that out of county general. So just something to explore, but again, I'm not at all advocating for it. It's just something that we can start to explore. As far as commissioner report, we had a couple weeks ago, the first group of J cap participants graduated. So as you recall, that's a new program for us. You know, we're building that jail and there's gonna be a J cap wing, a jail chemical addiction program wing. But we started the program at Community Corrections and Alyssa Hodges is running that with Paula, Paula's here.
Alyssa's done all the work.
Yeah, Alyssa is a rock star. And so anyway, we're just excited to have that first group go through. And just wanted to report that back to you that that's working. And then also, there's a veteran treatment court graduation this week. So I'm sure you all received an invitation to that, and I would encourage you to go on Thursday. Yesterday, the, in the commissioner meeting, we accepted a bid for a roof repair at the, at the Marshall Hall in the museum. As you recall, we got that DNR grant for repairs to the building. We accepted the bid from Dom Brothers for forty-six thousand five hundred. But we rejected some other bids. We felt the pricing was, well, one other bid, we felt the pricing was too high. And so we're gonna change the scope of work. Our maintenance department's gonna do some work that they hadn't planned on doing. They, it was supposed to be part of the bid, but they're gonna go work alongside Dom Brothers on the roofing, doing some work behind the guttering. And then the scope will change for the other work and we'll put it back out to bid, try to get that price down. Last month, Councilman Wheeler asked about appraisals for the additional entrance to the jail. And I did leave you a a copy. We've only got one back and we're still waiting. I'd hope that we'd have that back today for you, but we don't. So that was good valuation. The other is complete appraisal services. We're still waiting. And we can send that, we can email, I printed one copy and we can email that y'all to y'all, but I'm just kinda waiting for the other one before I send it. And then lastly, I would just say, don't forget that we hope to see you at Community Corrections after the meeting to go through the building and discuss Mark Surtovat and Paula Williams' proposals for changes to the building. That's all I have.
You might have to see that phrase up, Ken.
So if this community corrections, addition, whatever you wanna call it, goes through, how much ARPA money will be left?
I don't have that in front of me, but I could get to you that the Community Corrections project was part, well, the changes to the building was part of that ARPA plan from the beginning, and there is still a remaining balance.
Okay.
The commissioners don't yet have, we've not yet put our heads together and make a plan. I know my hope is that we would help township fire departments.
That's.
That's what I'm looking at, forward-thinking as far as the remainder, but we, I can't officially say the commission stuff.
Thank you. That's, that's what my question is gonna be is.
That's on my radar. Yeah, it's right on the front of my head.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep. Anything else?
Anything else, Jim? Thanks, Jim. Okay, we have the minutes from our last meeting to be approved.
That was presented.
Okay, first, second. John. Further discussion? Being done, all in favor, raise your right hand. All that opposed, the same. While they're finishing up, anybody out in the audience have, audience have anything to say? In town. Yeah, if you have a vote, go vote. John, you have anything?
I do. Thank you, Benjamin. Benjamin's coming up on Saturday. We appreciate the honor.
Joe?
No, I would just also encourage people to go to the Benfils TV site on Thursday also. It's really awesome to watch. Except the library. You know, elaborate, two thirty.
Thor?
I have nothing, Nick.
Nick?
I have nothing. I have nothing.
I don't have anything, but thanks for coming. We're adjourned.